Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. This is Monday, October 1, 2018, at 7:05 PM. Mr. Terry.
I see Brown.
Here.
How's Hal?
Here.
Danny Dink.
Here.
Lance Terry.
Yes, Terry.
Here.
Phil Corr.
Thank you. At this time, we're writing for our prayer and pledge of allegiance tonight. Our prayer will be led by Pastor Trent Hinton, and we can forward, sir, because we want to look at you and do our pledge by a chief of awesome place. That's prayer.
Lord, we love you. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, all the good things, and, Lord, we believe that Greenwood is a good thing. As we are entrusted to take care of the things that you've placed in our lives, God, I ask that you lead, guide, and direct each decision that's made tonight, God. We know that each leader that's risen up, God, according to your power and according to your will, we ask that we would be able to, under your direction, in each decision that we make tonight, ask that you let them have the boldness to follow you in each choice that they make. We ask that we would be pleasing to you and give you glory in all things, God. We ask that you protect members of the community, protect members of the council and each elected official, Lord. We ask that we would be a place of hope in a dark world as a community, Lord, that you would bless us, that you would bless us spiritually, physically, and financially, God. We ask that your kingdom would come in Greenwood just as it is in heaven, Lord, and that your will would be that, God. Ask this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you see him? For the Trenton, you have a captive audience if you want to go ahead and go into an exercise as well. You want to warm up.
Okay, so pastors. I was a coach at East Center CrossFit.
Yes, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have segued that way some sort of crossing. And I went out there one time and watched. That's all I'm gonna do. Pretty good job, buddy.
We have a good parks director that's been joining us.
That's what I heard. I noticed you got a swing on it, so that's all square. All right. Approval of minutes. If the council would take a look at those, if you have not had a chance to, ask for approval of minutes in September 4th meeting, Council meeting. Motion accepted.
Lance Terry.
Yes.
How's Hal?
Yes.
I see Brown.
Yes.
Danny Dink.
Yes.
Good Terry.
Yes.
I see Harris.
Just so you know, those that are looking. We're getting help. We wanted to shake some things up tonight in a very exciting sort of way, so we typically go from that end to that end and have four.
It is very interesting.
And Charlotte and I, our Mr. Terry, got together and they said, "Let's just shake it up." So she's calling upon him randomly.
Just helping, right?
Lance? Mr. Terry's still looking at him. Okay, so.
Well, that's the whole point. That wouldn't have been any much.
Okay, so it won't get any worse than that much. Thank you for that. We have a time of recognition and acknowledgements. I don't have anything scheduled tonight, but I want to recognize those that are here this evening. Thank you for being here. I know we have a couple of folks in the audience at the top floor that are interested in the council, I seek, I believe, I think that's what they're, I won't point you out, but nobody in particular, but thank you for being here and being interested in the City Council. T, it's always good to see you and continue to improve despite living the time, so that's all just a joke. But thank you for being here tonight, and we're gonna try to get this done within three hours. Moving on, bid opening. Mr. Jeremy Shores. We're sticking to something in the middle of the agenda here, but we feel like we could use a bid opening. Let Mr. Shores go.
We'll be opening bids tonight on San Andreas water portion improvement on Highway 10 near Ware Road and not with action. It's a company by bid line amount of five percent of the total bid. They have acknowledged receipt of the bid number one. They have submitted a bid for a bid price of $319,955 and zero cents. $319,955 and zero cents. Second bid is from Fordshire Incorporated. It's also accompanied by a bid line amount of five percent of the total bid. They have submitted a bid price of $279,734 and zero cents. It's accompanied by a bid line amount of five percent of the total bid. They have submitted a bid price of $130,078 and zero cents. $130,078 and zero cents. It's also accompanied by a bid line amount of five percent of the total bid. They have acknowledged receipt of the bid number one. They have submitted a bid at a price of $166,024 and 30 cents. $166,024 and 30 cents. Again, we appreciate the business and enjoy working with you in Greenwood and continue to do stuff.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. It's great. See, I thought I could make sure on that Goodwin and Goodwin bid, was that $130,078? $130,078 is what I've got now. Correct.
Hold on, Mr. Terry.
Okay.
I'd like to motion with the board, the most responsible bidder after their view.
Right. Have a motion in a second.
Mr. Hal?
Yes.
Everett Daniels?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you checking that?
Yeah.
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to committee reports at this time. Any questions or comments about that report? Pass on to Sammy or myself, we'll get those to Ken before you call the director. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Down there to ask for some more specific of this company. Headed in the right direction. Okay. SRCA, please, someone is in 410. Same thing, any questions, God, recently, as you may know or may not know, I sit on the board of directors, we meet monthly, and Lisa, the director, look, the ones that are under Denise, wait, Vina, who not necessarily, pardon?
Deanna.
Deanna, who not come, but she does report for her region and some of the other, she always do, so we always get a pretty good rapport from them, so if you have any questions regarding that, by the way. Arcs Commission, Bell's here, of course.
Having things on.
What's the report? In fact, questions from Mr. Bell, comments for our Water Water Commission, the Secretary is here, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, I'm providing a report, but I think there's probably a couple of questions and I think we're about some clarity on some others, so. Good evening, Council Mayor. First thing, I want to make an announcement that unfortunately we have an open position on the Water Commission, which Mark Musso is dying, so we're actively trying to pursue someone who's interested in serving in our borough, so we'll keep you posted on that. About seven weeks ago, I wonder, about seven weeks ago, we saw some anomalies in the water plant where as the production of treatment was up, you know, significantly up, so, you know, we started looking for the obvious, which is a water leak, and then we tried to tie back to what we built, and it was a huge difference in what was produced versus what was built, so we knew that we had a leak somewhere, so we began trying to find those leaks and ended up having to hire a leak detection company to come out. They spent about four days looking for the leak over a period of a week and a half. They couldn't find it. So we started shutting off some valves and with Hawkins Rare helping us identify the leak, it's actually under the creek, so that's one of the reasons why we couldn't find it, it's leaked water into the creek, and we had some rains and.
Which creek?
One behind.
Arpsel.
Arpsel. Yes, Arpsel, yeah. We've got a 12-inch main that cuts across there, and we think that the, it was put together 2006, I believe, 2006.
That's on Dr. Burgess Park.
It's on Dr. Burgess Park, and it's a pretty significant leak. We were leaking, as of last count, we were leaking about 200,000 gallons a day.
Well, that's the one, that's the large water line replacement we had with, with the engineering. I would have thought that that would have been, the quality would have been inspected there.
Well, it was done with, not solid fused pipe, but vellum.
So in 2006, was that not the large water line replacement we did with Randy Coleman?
I think it is. We did, yeah. So we think we've identified it, and they started this, they started Jeff on this morning replacing, you know, we can't really, it's pushing a new pipe underneath the trench, because we'd had to get in the trench, we'd had to have four engineers involved, and that would have taken us until later, so that same dude was hiring someone to start pushing a new 12-inch pipe underneath there, and then we'll tie the two together. We're hoping by tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, this is gonna be resolved, and we'll start seeing the anomaly in the plant runtime come down a bit better, so.
What area of town does that supply?
You know, it kind of feeds everybody. If it feeds most of downtown, then that also feeds all the tanks that we had eventually, and they all feed from that, so we were kind of seeing strange issues everywhere, even in some of the tanks were not filling up correctly. And so it took a while for the guys to try to pinpoint and turn valves on and off, trying to figure out what part of town it was in, and finally we did, and got the leak identified on Friday, and then we had somebody out here this morning starting to do the repairs. We'll let you know at the next meeting if that resolved, and if not, we'll be working on another option, because we were, we were running up 14, 16, even push 17, 18 hour a day on the plants trying to pump up, and we were pushing James Ford, you know, as much as we could as well, so it was, it was getting a little dicey, but I think we got it resolved. We're waiting on a response from James Ford, their proposal for the property at the end of Tinsburg there, and Highway 71, AKA Burger Property, and John Bailey's working that. They got it in their hands, and there's been some discussion about it, but they're waiting on a board meeting, they don't have regular scheduled board meetings, but we're waiting on them to get together, and we're prepared to go sit and negotiate with them, and so right now it's in their hands. We also started a cost recovery ordinance, which can fix the draft, we're fine tuning that, working through the eyes and the teams on that, did that back in front of commission for approval, but basically it would cover the entire area of annexation that Sunday presented to the council and passed, the whole Highway 71 corridor, which would require that if you do a tie-in from a commercial standpoint, it should be associated with that, just like we did on the tractor supply line, we covered some of those costs. We also did a memo agreement with James Ford, which we did good response, and that was positive, that anywhere in the city limits that we currently need to push fire lines for suppression, hydrants, for fire protection, we can do that, and then if a particular area needs municipal water for service, then we'll have to negotiate, that's what James Ford will be able to go, because most of that Highway 71 corridor, even up to Tinsburg, as well as, or excuse me, Medinburg, as well as 10, it belongs to James Ford because they're a water radiator. So as we approach them, the areas, even though those are in the city limits, we have to negotiate those rights, but that won't stop us from moving forward from a development standpoint, the commercial corridor, because we can provide a water service, which is more important, probably, until we know what business is going in there, the water service for fire protection, fire pressure is probably the most important thing that most commercial entities are gonna want to see. It's very possible that they got a bad turn, they need to flush toilets, the James Ford can provide that water, but they're not here kind of in Greenwood unless they know they have fire protection, so that's what they're first priority. Engineering is underway for water sewer development from Walmart down to Denver. That Walmart sewer will come all the way back up in time to Westwood, but we'll have, basically, the engineering is underway when that project is kicked off, which probably won't be this year, we'll see how long the engineering takes, but that gives water and sewer along that Highway 71 corridor. We have, we have water truck supply now, we have sewer in that area as well, there, we put a line in there just north of Walmart, so we can service that entire corridor down to Denver once this project is completed.
Steve, I had a question about that. The, it would seem to me the west side of this highway developed, I mean, none of us know, right, but it would seem like the west side could be developed first, having this line on the east side, does that provide for west side?
Yeah, that's just, we'll just have to work on pushing it underneath Highway 71. Each one of those crossings were about $180,000, and then you've got James Ford on the west side, it's got a 12-inch main, but it has to cut, so, you know, we gotta be careful.
Is that James Ford's service area on the west side?
Yeah. But, you know, we can service if something's gonna go in there, we just start talking about that, working with the developer, and we will be able to push under there, tighten these lines that we're putting in on the side. We did look at going down the west side, the cost of crossing those roads, roads, that Highway 71 corridor or multiple times would be cost prohibitive.
Is it, when you say $180,000, is that for, like, each two lanes? I mean.
Yeah, that's about 300 foot.
Okay. So is it, so you get across all four lanes, is it then like, you know, $360,000 completely, or is it $180,000?
No, it's about $180,000, right, to get over from one side to the other.
Okay.
For water, that's same for sewer, so you would have, because you can't put them in the same bid, that's the state, statute won't let you do that, so, you know, you would have double cost, depending on who pushed the water or just pushed the sewer. And again, if determined, it's small commercial business with very little water, James Ford can be able to service that, we just have to work to either provide the sewer or something else.
And I'm wondering, is there any kind of special, you know, cost, you know, that you could apply just to, you know, a business that needs just sewer only, you know, to help also our costs without the water?
There's every ordinance that Mike put together as a draft, and we're working with him on, has a cost for each one, a cost for water, a cost for sewer, so they do both, and I wouldn't say what the amount is, it's a little premature because we're still trying to absorb what's in that, that's the right amount, but, you know, there's gonna be a cost for sewer tie-in and the cost for the water thing.
What's the difference in James Ford providing water to something, let's say, on the west side, and then you're saying we might have to negotiate with them to get it in our ground, or?
If they can't, if they can't provide fire protection, which typically James Ford cannot provide, but they do have areas they can provide fire protection, I actually think there might be fire at that area, that was in Groceville, but there are areas where they can, if they can provide the fire protection, there's no need for us to service that, that area. We're accomplishing our goal, and as long as they can beat the water demand, you know, any business that would come in there would have their needs met, and we just have to figure out a sewer solution.
And the water demand just decides to pop in the ground and out?
Yeah.
Reason I'm asking is they supply us water, so, I mean, it's kind of James Ford, whether it's in our pipe or not, it's just a matter, because they're our big, they're our big pipe, so.
Right. Depends on the location, and how much pressure you're in the.
I just didn't, some people think that they didn't have enough water. When we're saying they can't service it, some people might think that we're saying they don't have enough water to service it, which would be true.
No, that's not true, and I'm, I'm an expectation, my apology, I think the challenge James Ford has is providing fire protection, so if we feel that, if there's a hotel that's over there, that they're not gonna be able to service that, we had to provide that, because they don't have enough pressure coming from the tank, anywhere to provide that pressure for the hotel would be, but for faucets and kitchens and things like that, they can handle that, or whatever, without any issue.
Steve, there's, there's other cities that have the same problem we do. They approach on rural water systems, correct? Correct. Figures probably up in northwest Arkansas. We're part of Arkansas Municipal League, Municipal League's supposed to help us on our behalf, so this may be a handy, my handy question. Can laws be changed where they can hold us hostage to where we can, I mean, we're pushing very big lines just to provide fire protection, and we're being held hostage by a guy that's running a line like this. I'm thinking about eminent domain, I mean, if we went, we needed to cross the creek, we could claim eminent domain and push a bridge across the creek or tear someone's house down. It's costly, but we could do that.
Thank you for coming.
So how does eminent domain, would it apply to situations like we're in, out there at Highway 71 corridor?
Well, it's the revenue, it's their, it's their revenue source, that's probably the difference.
Ultimately, a judge would have to tell you how much that was worth. In domain, you don't get it for free, you gotta pay a reasonable price for it, so a judge would tell you how much you have to pay, it's to negotiate between us and them, some judge might tell you, you could come to agree.
Actually, a jury could tell you.
What reasonable price would be?
Which is what happened with Fort Smith, and which, what happened with Fort Smith was set precedence on us, because it's the same, James Ford's the same entity, Fort Smith spent how many millions of dollars paying off, I mean, a lot, and they expect a lot from us. That's why we're trading lightly on this.
Right, but it seems like this entity was put in place and funded by the public for public use, I mean, the government put money into these organizations to develop them to help people out, and they're turning around and taking this entity and holding the rest of us hostage in a town that's trying to grow.
Well, the issue you get into is that they use their future development estimates in that area to pledge for bombing purposes and so forth, if the city of Greenwood starts infringing upon that, and that throws all of that a buck, and that's what they have legislation draft and the way we think of it.
It is something we need to look at, and the mayor and I have talked about it a couple of times, we need to get a representative involved, and we need to go kind of bounce this case.
But whereas we're different from Fort Smith, that Fort Smith is not, does not receive any water from James Ford, like, you know, as a municipality, right? I mean, we're receiving water from James Ford.
I think that's the, you know.
Is that mere customer?
Your customer.
We're buying the water from James Ford regardless of.
And I think that's, you know, John made that point very well in his memo to them to try to make sure they understood, you know, you're selling the water to these customers anyway through us, so maybe we have to tweak the agreement between us and James Ford a little bit to get that a little more recognized. He also staked into consideration depreciation of their lines, which they did not take into consideration, so I think there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to be discussed.
We made it perfectly clear, we are not just one of their customers, we're their largest customer.
John, can you do me a favor? No, you're free to talk, I just need you to come to microphone.
We made it clear to them that we want to be friendly, we want to have good working relationship with them, you know, Walmart's only here because they gave us that, and they get it for free, we gave, they switched some land out, I think, but, you know, that is a favor, but, you know, we made it perfectly clear, we're not just their customer, we're their largest customer, and it's usually a good idea to make, and we're offering them a reasonable amount, we're offering them 8.9 times annual revenue, and we've not put this in a memo, we're gonna make it, we need it to perfectly clear, you know, recently Amazon hit a trillion dollar market cap. At that time, Apple was trading about 4.24 times revenue, I think Amazon recently hit a trillion, Amazon temporarily did, it's like 2.2 times annual, so we're offering them 8.9 of the, a good price, they wouldn't worth twice that, though, and to buy everything they want back to them for the next few years, what they want, millions and millions and billions of dollars would cost us, and we're willing to pay a reasonable price, we're paying, I think our offer's a generous price, generous offer, but thank, you know, I may be greedy, but I talked to Dylan Sanford, he's got our memo, he was supposed to have a meeting with their board this month, and then, or last month, I should say, and it's gonna be this good, we don't have regular meetings, they got a bunch of people scheduled together, so hopefully it'll be here in October, and we're gonna negotiate, but, you know, their price warrants a thousand, we're offering probably between, we don't know what their annual revenue is, I'd ask them to have that available, how we can do a meet with them. So our offer's 120, by the time we see their annual revenue, it might be up to 180, that's still way under the 400,000, maybe one. Any questions?
Which is more than the model that was picked up in Fort Smith, so.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I think basically is there's a law that says the maximum they can charge, they can't charge more than a certain amount. Well, you know, there's a maximum interest rate in the state of Arkansas, y'all paying 70% of y'all's loans, that's the max? On federal power, electrical generation's $1,000 megawatt, if people routinely sell that, you pay a dollar per kilowatt of your house, eight times, so, I mean, we're ready to negotiate what that pans out to them, but we'll see. We want, we're wanting to, we want to continue to have good relationship with them, we want to make them a reasonable offer, but we want to be able, you know, ransom.
John, have you heard about, I know you have, and you said that you didn't have a meeting last month, or are you gonna reach out to somebody?
John, have you heard about, I know you have, and you said that you didn't have a meeting last month, or are you going to reach out to somebody?
I asked, I talked to Donnie twice since I've talked to him out there. And he said that I totally wanted to be there, I said there might be at least one, maybe two to three. I mentioned you might be there, I mentioned me and Steve might be, I definitely want to be there. And we were waiting for when that meeting would be.
I think we can go with somebody too that might have this long, that meeting, I'll get the schedule.
Play two.
Yeah, anyone, anyone knows who they're aboard, please reach out and kind of help sell this, I, we, we'll get them.
Who's on their board?
Stan Hope, Sharon Walters, there's a cattleman named DuBois, south of, I know him some, and there's a beauty blind, those are the three guys.
Let me ask you, is, if without them, we don't have enough water to service when we got, I'd have population.
Eighty percent of the time, eight out of ten years, maybe nine times out of ten years? Yeah, I mean, dude, it's that, one out of ten, two out of ten years that we would finish. Most of the, it's on much rainfall.
Yeah, yeah, in the summertime, we're purchasing sixty, Greg?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent from here. And that swaps in the wintertime, usually produce sixty percent, about, or head nearby about thirty percent. Now, the last few weeks have been, I mean.
They go on the creek?
Yeah, our lake would have been going down pretty good the last few weeks, yeah, the last couple months.
I'm just saying, we don't really have a bargaining issue. The fire fest pitch softball team, the pitcher's fair and catchy hostage.
Well, I mean, they're, the problem is, they may not have enough water supplied us. We hit that one in ten year drought, they had, we had a four month mini drought last year. And their lake went down ten times, they struggled. We did because we might support, and we might struggle too. So I'm not sure the water could be there if we needed it. But how do we get perfectly clear if it's not, and they, and they have those losses, we are going to be very unhappy customers if we're paying where we don't need, where we want it, it's not there. And then they have those losses on this other deal, we need to make perfectly clear about that.
But we're at that, I mean, we're, we've made them flag, you know, for so many gallons a month.
We buy them in, pretty much everyone, yeah.
It's happy today.
And, you know, they're trying to make the lake extended, we didn't do somewhat the same thing, I mean, but, you know.
And Greg, I mean, I just saw the report, I think seventeen billion is what we bought from them.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen, sixteen billion is what we bought this past month. So, you know, we're right after the buy at five hundred and fifteen.
Remember, has it through really another lake?
They've been talking about that for a while, they're in it, it's an eco issue, I think.
I was part of the committee that helped kind of negotiate, I think you were too, Daniel. And, you know, I, my new man is the best, sometimes thinking they stress that they would be the closest, that be further along they are now. But they haven't come very far with that, obviously, like, it's been like eight, nine years, Daniel, it's been a while, I remember that part a long way.
I just said, uh, we should go look at that contract we did. I can't remember. I mean, I don't know if any of this is mentioned in that contract. Before you go out there to meet, we ought to understand what's in our, our existing contract, right?
Yeah, that is true. And they have an option to raise price, they've not raised price since contract or something.
Uh, they raised it once, didn't they? I think they had a systemized process raised it once since then, I think. But I don't think they can raise just nothing, not raise anyone else, I mean, that, I don't know, people.
Sunny, sorry to wake you up. I know you're not familiar about this thing, if I remember correctly, Jim, I'm telling him, does he, does he have a little bit of knowledge on this stuff too, along with general planning or not?
I'm sure he does, and I think he.
I mean, I would be proud of him, but I think he's.
Got more knowledge, don't think like this, we'll get anybody to stay. He did, he got that picture.
I think you can touch on it a little bit.
Sadly, I'm seeing a market, yes, name, all number one. All right, two more, two more important things I need to try to cover. One is engineering, we started, the commissioner approved to extend a sewer trunk line up Bell Edition for another twenty-five, three thousand people. That's going to allow those residents in Bell Edition a closer opportunity to tie into it. We had to be very careful when we met with Mike, talked about this, you know, was his suggestion to be, we extend a trunk line, and that's what we're extending this trunk line. So there it is, come get it. So we're engineering that and we'll get back to you on the cost of what that's, that's going to lose. Everyone up there. It, it's going to be wherever the engineers think that probably needs to lay, because it's got to correct the feedback. Oh, there's a right muscle there. Malice over here, or down Bell Street.
So with that front line cover, I guess, then all the residents over there and?
Well, they could if you're not into it.
If you're not into it, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be sufficient size.
It'd be sufficient size, I think you're on with twelve?
Twelve, yeah.
Twelve, twelve inch.
What about, what about your discussion, your plan of how to address that with the system? I know you have an engineer that are kind of working on that too.
Yeah, we're discussing it, but, you know, what we're going to do is make sure they know it's available, right? And then they can form their own little sewer groups if they want to tie into this, you know, if they have a lot, lot less cost to them if there's a trunk line, and that's our objective.
Talk to the few residents who are anxious to hear, they were excited to know that it's even a discussion.
We just started the engineering, so we will be getting the information out. Last thing I have to cover is the older part of the, the subdivision. We're looking at alternatives, you know, the health department denied the tank. So they suggested, the health department suggested that we do a pump station, which is quite expensive. I believe there's one here in front of the furniture factory down the street, they're making it operate right now, but there is one here. So engineers looked at costs associated with that, could be more than the tank. So that's communicated back to the Joneses. Stewart's been very, or Chief Ryan's been very helpful, we actually got on with the fire marshal in that conference call with the health department engineers to try to see, you know, what options do you have? You're basically saying fire protection is not important, all you're concerned with is drinking water. And so engineers have gotten back in touch with, with the health department, they're looking for alternatives for us to push additional water to different pressure planes, like metal brook, I think it's metal brook. Push water into a different pressure plane to relieve the turnaround, because they won't see that water turnaround in two to four days. They're actually telling us, we heard from Jared this morning, they want to see that tank turnaround in a day, which is unheard of. I mean, why would you ever, because they feel James Fork water, which is already treated for chlorine, is very outdated. And so by the time it gets to the tank, it stores there, then our trial and that and issues are going to be a problem with that tank. So they prefer to see that, that twenty-four hour turnaround. But, you know, industry standard is somewhere between two and five days. So we're working with them to try to get one more stab at trying to understand what our options are. And if that doesn't work, then, you know, I don't see how there's going to be anything developed in there. Because you can't, you can't provide fire protection, it's not, it's not drinking water, we provide drinking water, but you can't provide fire, fire protection.
Do we have, will that kind of turnaround in our other tower?
We're, Greg turns, Greg, do you want to speak to them?
Uh, yeah, on, we have one out at Westwood, and it is overbuilt, so we don't fill it up as full because of the trial and that thing.
We tried that too, we asked them, could we not just build the tank and then only fill it, you know, because the problem is phase one and two. By the time phase three gets here, the tank cycle's third fine, it's unissued. But it's phase one and two that's a problem, so you don't have enough customers there to turn it over with. So we said, well, we'll, we'll fill it up, or whatever level we need to fill it to, so it'll turn in two to four days, and they're not willing to allow us to do that. Why? We have no idea, can't.
So you can still, you think accomplishing fire protection by having a fire pump that would somehow need to trigger automatically, fills the whole thing up real fast?
No, the tank, there wouldn't be a tank. When, when a fire demand is made, when you got a soak up to a fire hydrant and that demand is made, it turns its pumps on, starts pumping at enormous pressures and volumes. And then when your fire hydrant turns off, it shuts back down, so that's a constant constant movement of water, there wouldn't be a tank at all. The cost associated with that was upwards of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which the Joneses said is too much money to spend, they wouldn't be able to get that.
So some of these hillsides are going to be.
A challenge.
A challenge to develop.
Now, every, every water plane, every water plane is a separate project. So, you know, there's been discussion about expanding the oaks, I think the mayor's been working on that. That doesn't seem to be a problem, even though they're on the side of that hill.
Pressure plant.
Different water plant, it's pressure plant.
It doesn't seem like they would allow for you to say, you know, hey, Arizona's just kind of built in stages, you know, and so we got a plan for the maximum.
I think you wouldn't have to explain that to them.
Well, this morning in our, in our department head meeting, we've gone as far as congratulating Chief Ryan because if he succeeds with state fire marshal, as if he, he doesn't say he's definitely there yet, it sounded like our, state fire marshal may be making.
Well, they're stretching their hands, they're trying to figure out what's going on.
Difference on what the health department. So if it becomes Stewart Court subdivision or something like that, we're giving him some credit. And I know it's roller coaster ride for those in the audience that were there to wonder what's going to happen to tank or pump or whatever and stuff.
Stay tuned.
We're all on the same ride, just on different cars, I guess.
We'll know in, I'm sure in a couple of weeks, I'm sure John was pretty frustrated with the whole process. You know, it's, it's kind of like out of our hands, we can't control the health line, it has the, has it's like a puppet loose. Any other questions to me, there's a lot of stuff.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we got a, we have nine of them, the agenda, are they executing that?
For what, for our distribution?
It's a budget amendment. For the, I always see them on the first report.
Just bring it down, I can take care of it.
It goes like that, that's right, the council's here.
All right, I'll let Mr. Ray read the. I don't have the firm. Oh, here it is, it just appeared. A resolution amended in the twenty eighteen city of Greenwood budget to increase professional fees within the water and sewer funds for other purposes. This is to increase by thirty-five thousand dollars. Well, it, it goes in the line, I'm assuming you don't have a copy of it? Okay, this is for the engineering services, for the how we send one quarter of water to the engineering.
Make a motion to approve this.
What's, what's twelve two fifty, which is that?
We, twelve two fifty is the account number for city sales and these type of water sewer restricted. I don't know if you remember, but a couple of meetings ago, we approved booting that out of general, establishing its own fund. City sales and these type of water sewers now, its own fund.
So one's for the water, one's for the sewer.
Correct.
Engineer.
A second.
Yeah, motion is safe.
Mr. Chadwick, Terry.
Yes.
Is he round?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes. Yes. All right, do you have a question to me?
I don't have a question, but I want to commend you and the commission for working hard to make things happen. I think that's the best way to put it. We all, if we believe in, and I certainly believe to extent that we're going to be growing big time in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. I don't know if it'll be twenty, I don't know if it'll be twenty-five thousand by twenty forty like they say, but we might be, can't grow without water and sewer. Very plain, so thank you for looking into that and being willing to do that.
Well, you can see, we made the investment in the water, in the sewer home, since her for traction lines, what happened, happened there. It's the right thing to.
It's an old cliche, it will come.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ray, for being here also.
Okay.
Assistant forum, we did not have anyone sign up this evening to speak, but you didn't know the routine or the life of speaking, change your mind or not want to?
Yeah.
Absolutely, important. I want to recognize why you're coming up, we have a scout, be the scout master in the audience or whatever, Francois, AKA Frank is. Uh, your son, is it your son? Okay, well, thanks for coming, we're always willing to share, it's good to see that you've come, you being yourself. Yes, sir.
Diane, my Dan, glad we're back, too. Thank you. Since the water tank may be back on again, as to my knowledge, council still hasn't addressed lasting ordinance. Really appreciate it if you guys would endorse at least the federal regulations, even if you're not going to rewrite the local ones.
We're going to rewrite it for local ones to cooperate with the federal. It's just become a much bigger project than what I initially thought. And I hope that I'm having this to make input to the bottom line, because I, I don't have that yet, so it is, I'm just asking you to bear with me.
Appreciate.
I would have moved everywhere to have it here, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Diane, my Dan, bye. Yes, sir. Are you, are you citizen and will?
I'm a citizen, I had to do something, I told my friends, I was discussing that. Basically, they said, excuse me, about Perry Mall, and I asked about a spray, and they said, well, just use those, just use those. I'll sit out there and bring it up for you guys to discuss.
I think we've done that fast. We've done it fast, I'm not sure where we are, I don't even know, we look at it. And gone. Dude?
Talking to the Fort Smith.
Yeah, we'll get it. Okay, Dennis? Will, we have. Look at your average, it's basically done through the street department, if there's a contact, I think.
Spray.
Yes, sir. So we'll look into that, I, I know that personally myself, I see me scratching this evening, I went out to this, and I went out and looked at an area. Yeah, they're out, excuse me, they're out. I, I think so, we'll, we'll find out what it is, and should it be, we'll think. Now, I'm really scratching that, I don't know, I don't.
Or grab some of the streets.
Or maybe convert the streets, we were into a spray, I don't, I don't really, we'll look into it, see what we find out. Absolutely, I'm with you on fire. I ran across two young men the other day, Tim and I were out looking at some road issues, and two young men, I stopped to visit with them. They were about five or six years old, and I hit two sport cars, and I said, what are you guys doing? And they said, we're killing ants. I'm sure they might hire them. Okay, no one else to speak at, sir.
Did you not tell about the fight in the west?
I didn't, didn't have a heart. Yes, sir. If you said your name.
Jared Delsky. I just wanted to come up and introduce myself, and I'm with Heidco, I don't know, or, and I just wanted to bring up just some information about us for the city council.
Do you want to share anything, do you have any questions? Oh, go ahead, you guys have something like that? Okay, thank you, sir.
Delsky, D U L, S K I. What is that? Commercial contractor, they do streets, roads, buildings, community centers, sports complexes.
What, sorry, next?
Sports complexes, aquatic parks.
Sports complexes.
So we, I had heard that you had been with, or spoke with Philip Melby, the mayor of Heidco.
Yes.
And so he is one of those folks, and me about coming up here and introducing us to you guys, so. We had done the water park for Heidco.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want else? Brother Trentline, impressed, you are still here.
You can stick around, we'll be on the information.
We're going to pass a plate in just a second. Agenda additions this evening, I thought I was going to cut to you here with that, Eddie, but Sonny brought that for me. So we need to add a number eight. And I just put planning commission. Can you remind me? Confirmation for member Robert Ginkin. Okay. And that's all I received this morning in our department. Didn't see anybody else having any. By the way, poor Tom, just say that real quick. He's not feeling well, so we're trying to do this. So he told me he didn't have to be here, but he insisted, so I'm not feeling well. Um. Okay. We will move on. Old business ordinance adopting interlocal agreement for mental health catchment areas, the second reading. If you remember last month, this is the one that Judge Hudson came and spoke to us about. I don't have any more information. He said he would be glad to come. We need anybody else. More question?
I know that he went from here to Arlen, I believe.
Okay.
And some other places. Anybody here, any?
They taped them in first and they voted in last month.
I'm two.
Marlin passed, passed.
I spoke to the judge on a couple of occasions this last month or since that meeting at different, different events, ribbon cutting and whatnot. And he did not give you a list, but he said, I don't want this quoting, but I believe he said no one had, either they were doing a second therapy or they had passed it. No one has refused it yet.
As the other gentleman that had Jingle here, not, he come along together. He was, I think he was a special needs or something. Why he wanted to come around this at all? I mean, he was a proud candidate for this catch. Last month, twenty-three.
Also, I don't know if you know anything about this, Chief.
I don't know if he was necessarily small part of this, but he said this.
Of course, we don't know. I don't know how full it is either. We don't have a chance to, on any given night, because there's that many, how many residents?
Sixteen or something. And maybe that'll.
Maybe. Because they're only there forty or twenty-four hours.
Seventy-two.
Sorry?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two. Three, that's right. Three days. That's right.
Well, I'm, I'm not a medical doctor, but I'm quite certain it's dealing with the fast way you're getting off. I didn't need to be there. He could surely qualify for this deal. Just by reading the kind of.
He was actually, he had a warrant. Six seven X, but he had a warrant taken to jail, uh, before he come go from that facility, maybe nine times in a month. So that, that.
Probably getting, maybe it would be.
Has there been any discussion on, you know, why isn't AC plan that we can, you know, if we're not, we're.
He said, we put, I mean, Mike, can you say was the kitchen or?
Uh, he just said, take my word for it. I disagree. He became kind of aggravated at me.
That was a judge's turn. Bring the masses election years forward. We can make this year. Well, no, we can pass this after the election. We can sure get a reelection.
He's running this. He's running.
No, it's not like being a follower. You make a statement, you like civil, that's about it. Not being a follower. You know, you gotta get your dick out.
Well, I'm kind of a gambler. I like to be one. Come out of this. I like to rub it in myself.
Sometimes I get it all started. So, um, that's my opinion. I mean.
Well, I know that we've said in the past that we did an average of like three or four, you know, about a year or a quarter or.
It's a year. We, we got a facility here in town that could fill this up in about three minutes. So.
Talking facility.
You know, honestly, I mean, I ain't going to lie, right? But we have a facility here in town.
Well, I guess what I was, if, if we determine, uh, just some type of, uh, uh, you know, writing in there to say that based on your number that we kind of have on a monthly basis or whatever, and base it on like fifty-four per day, you know, let's say that's the max that we would commit ourselves to. You know, uh, because I guess I'm there at a brand. I mean, I see brands are here and then they're gone. And.
Well, it, it does say in the contract, if the state funding goes away, then everybody get out.
And I will say, yeah.
And Judge Hudson says the funding goes away, they're.
Well, I can, I can promise you the county will be the first out. He reiterated that. I was, I was with him at ribbon cutting and chappy crossing, and he was talking to a new legislature there. And he was also talking to, uh, a prominent businessman, Phil Smith, who just wanted to know about it. And he, he didn't look at me and say, they passed it. He looked at me and said, cities are working on passing it. We hope they do. But he also very much said, you know, Judge Hudson's pretty plain usually, if the funding's not there, the county's out and, or the cities will not pay for it. So it's a safety net. I don't, I don't know if this is not.
Well, I know that, uh, initially, you know, forming or I think I think was in the, uh, in the budget, and then Governor Hudson, you know, committed another one point four. And that's where we kind of come up with between the four CSUs, you know, we each get one point six. And so I know SNF, the writing here says, yeah, if funding goes away, then, you know, and we'll, we're not obligated to pin you, but I think to what extent, I mean, it's funny if it's cut to half or if it's, goes away completely, you know, I mean, if it's cut to half, then, you know, well, there, there, I can still say we're funding it, but not this is to the level that we work.
Well, there again, make sure you understand. I know you do. I'm not, I don't want to be right, right around, but it is the patience that we send. On.
No, that's not what I understand.
Yeah, it absolutely is.
Yes.
The, absolutely. My.
It's only hard.
I agree with that, see. There's two portions of it. There's one that is based upon maintenance and that.
Yes.
And then there's another on operations. One of them is based upon population.
I'm talking, yeah, I'm not saying.
Is based upon, if your costs will be based upon total.
Right. I'm not, yes, I don't disagree with that. There's money still to be paid for maintenance. I'm talking about the patient in the, we do not pay anything. Um, that's just my.
Well, I agree.
Okay. We don't pay anything for any patient from manure, ammo, barling, anywhere else. Maintenance is different. There, there is that issue.
I agree. And maintenance can include what?
Doesn't say.
If, if maintenance is including a bunch of doctors, that maintenance bill's going to be very expensive. So maintenance includes what?
Is property.
And if our maintenance is similar, well, that's hack and surprise for maintenance.
Yes. Service, Sebastian Cameron.
Well, we, we would assume maintenance would include just repairs to building, building and utilities, that kind of thing?
That's my assumption. I don't know what's.
I personally, all four of them. It's a good thing. I think we need it. I just don't like the language. I don't know if you could want to ten years to that or crack up the way. I don't know who the idiot attorney was to break it up. This, I don't know. I would say.
You can say the idiot. I agree from the best of my end, yeah. Hey, we got into this, we've got this right now with our lease agreement.
Oh, I, I agree, but I, I.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, I don't know until the first year is.
I agree. That's exactly right. You need to get a year out of it.
Anybody's going to know until it's the first year.
I got.
And that, if you, if this agreement were, we're obligated for a year. And then we're going to come back and base this on something real. But if we're creating an agreement with no end to it, and the numbers come back at the end of the year and says, boy, sorry, everybody, it's four million dollars a year, you know, we're out, you know? Well, are we out? Can we get out? That's what concerns me. Use this con, the language in the contract. If you, if you're stuck, you're stuck. You done it.
So any language in this says, you know, on thirty days or sixty days, you know, either party can.
We need a reasonable out.
So what happens if we add the language that allows us to get out?
He wants to go and read, do the language and not drop. I mean, I understand that he's done a lot of work and he was in the middle of negotiations with a lot of people, but. If everybody else signs a bad contract, I don't think we should.
Can we add an addition to say, our, yes, we will do the contract for one year?
Uh, my question, the other segment is acceptable to really modify what the term of our participation.
Well, I just think.
I don't think we can do that here later. We could just say, okay, we'll make this exception.
So in our ordinance, we cannot say that this is, is good for the one year?
You can pass that ordinance, but as part of the ordinance that I presented, it says you're going to adopt a agreement, and what you're doing, adopting the ordinance is in conflict with what's in the agreement. So legally, I, I don't, I don't think you can do that.
Tom is our finance director. What, what is your input?
That's a win-win for the people that need that service, from number one. So you've got to think about what service we provide to the citizens of the community that would need that versus incarceration or in jail. And I don't, I mean, I agree with him. I, I, I would like to see something that it gives you an option to say, this is going in the direction we want, and we might have an exercise of thirty day, we're out. Uh, that's not in there. It just basically says that in two lines. It says, you get out if there's no funding to cut the grant funding. Well, he did say, well, you guys can get out, but that's not in here. And I agree with the whole argument. I mean, you, you are looking at, none knows is the cost of what their operations are going to be. He, he gave a pair, he gave a hypothetical in there. He said, suppose it's this and suppose it's that, but you can't bank that. He's saying, well, your cost would be twenty-seven dollars a day if the insurance paid eighty thousand and the grant covered, you know, sublass and, you know, it's, it's a gamble. Now, you do have monies tucked away. So if you were to do a year, I don't see how it could happen. This could be a windfall, but maybe it could turn around and actually be good for you. Because your option is to take the people, put them in jail for fifty-four dollars.
So what if we, as a city, say, yes, we're, we're putting funding in, you know, this budget, you know, then come around, you know, let's say for two thousand twenty, we say, well, we're not going to put any funding in there for, for, you know, two thousand twenty. What's, what's our repercussions?
Well, I'm not sure you're having, I'm not sure you're having to put money in the budget, but this is possibly, unless you feel as though the costs are going to be higher than what fifty-four dollars a day would be. And, you know, I like the idea of tapping it at, you know, no, no city's responsibility would be greater than the current cost of housing them in jail, which is what you were going for. So the only way we would budget more cost would be if we don't believe that this program is going to cap at fifty-four or be under. And I don't hear anybody talking that way. I don't hear anybody saying that they believe it's going to cost more, house them there for three days than it would be. The other I know you have is to what extent is insurance covered? Because whatever they don't cover, you know, insurance companies, I mean, whatever they don't cover, we're going to have to pay or ask a collective group of, um, cities.
The people that we take up there.
Well, no, you're covering your.
Other than the makers.
You're covering that maintenance cost. You're going to pay. You're going to pay your way.
The insurance, but the insurance you're talking about, that's not for the maintenance side, right?
The insurance is for the people that have insurance when they go there and the insurance company pays for some of their pay. Okay. But to what extent do they have expense that is not going to be covered by what you're paying as a daily rate? They're going to calculate a daily rate with that in mind. That's how that example shows. They said, well, five dollars a day, but when you divvy up the expenses that in this hypothetical, I dreamed up, your actual cost is going to be twenty-seven dollars a day. That's what it's going to actually be instead of fifty-four, because that's that cost share that they're going to be passing on to you. So, yeah, you pay when you bring somebody there, but you're also going to share in the cost that's not covered by grant or by, uh, private insurance.
In this place, a whole sixteen people that we did?
Think so.
How many people do we pick up that might still push to that?
It's hard to tell. I mean, most of them are also taken to jail. That's what I'm going to say. A ton of ostrich on this because of judgment accusing people, uh, to have any issues. They have to take them to hospital and go there, there for the past, we tried to have a hearing, get them admitted for six to hours at a hospital, somewhere else for taking there. So now jails has accused some people. And if we don't have the availability to take people to this facility, we're going to sit a little bit in our backseat. I don't know what to do. So just keep that in mind. It's kind of, uh, we had a boss saying on this thing also.
Well, I think they have, they have just sixteen beds. I'm sure that thing's probably full all the time.
I think Fort Smith.
That's, well, that's, that's my big drawback. Now, the monies, we're going to get us one of them. We're, we're, we're going to get stuck with this.
They talk about, what was it, three or four counties that are in this one?
Only six counties. I bet you Robert Rankelow has gotten voted to. But with sixteen beds, that's not very many, I don't think. I said, they came right here.
I could probably find out what their, if they've been in capacity now plus that.
And I say that because I said, you just gave me a scenario where the jail would take them. All right, we'll take them over to this place. We're full. I don't know. So who are we?
Well, in the past, as much as they do it, I mean, they weren't incarcerated until we made that carry. There's been, now they're not going to take them. Now.
Just now, we get something. If you come up to Mike, sorry, State Attorney.
Uh, question, if they actually physically refuse them, as a society, are we at risk? Because if someone has a physical illness, that they're capable of anything at any point in time. So are we actually, are our citizens at a risk if they refuse them? And community wise, that, that our, that our citizens are physically at risk? Would that be correct? Okay. Uh, the next thing that I, I have to ask, or to ask, I believe the judge said that historically, this is actually being done, uh, across the nation. Would I ask, if y'all could, uh, this physically detailed, what's actually, try to put the maintenance cost is, uh, and actually sort of move from there. Maybe the maintenance cost is actually very minimal, or maybe it's, it's very high. Also depending on that, what is it physically going to cost us? As far as contract basis, I would actually, uh, put in place, um, ninety day renewals for the first twelve months. Every ninety days, we have the option to get out on a thirty day notice. So at point ninety days, boom, this is costing us way too much money. Let's put in a thirty day notice and hang it thirty days, we're out. So that, therefore, we don't have to wait the fiscal year. We're, we're bouncing out for the ninety days. I mean, it just makes sense to me.
I think we all agree with that, that the judge, and I'm, and I'm not as big for him, but probably getting back, next time, getting back, he should, he basically said he would not entertain amending the ordinance or the, or the, or the contract. Uh, so that's an issue. I mean, I, I, it was kind of an interesting conversation. I don't know. This time, but no, I think everybody would, if we were writing this ourselves and coming up with a contract, we would want those options to get out.
I would also ask.
The only thing about the maintenance, I'm sorry, he did say, I think, I mean, the, the maintenance is unknown, obviously. If you got a building that's rehotted and, and, uh, we turn it, it's, it's a pretty nice facility, but they're not going to know that for a year.
Sure. I, I didn't know if you'd find a community within, you know, that has a population.
Has that?
Yes.
Actually, this is, yeah, this is the first one to be opened in Arkansas. They don't think they have a second open yet. In fact, they, to quote the judge, and I've already said it more times than once, that they kind of jumped the gun a little bit to get this open as quick as they did, but they saw it's even so good. So not arguing anything you said.
No, so is it, last thing I'll tell you, I'll leave your business. Uh, is the language from this contract, is it from another state or is it something they actually, or it's just?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm Wayne Robb, and I am a deputy in Scott County, and we utilize the CSU. I am a crisis intervention officer. I did the training. It is a wonderful tool as a ground level officer to be able to take them to that facility instead of housing them in our county jail. It has saved a lot of headaches because once we get them there, we have to take them to the hospital. We have to sit and wait at the hospital, bring them back. And if they agree, it's a holiday period, if they agree to go, there's no charges pending on that individual. He goes to the CSU, he gets his three days, up to three days. He goes to the CSU, he gets his three days, up to three days treatment, and he's released.
And from what I understand, services, the officers, and you may already have said what you said, but if you're, I don't want to give a word of convenience, but you're not tied up at all, some understanding, because this facility works, you bring them there and you're gone.
No, I've brought two people there since it's opened. And I was there maybe five minutes, and that was long enough to take the handcuffs off. I give them a call, I tell them who I am, I tell them I'm a crisis intervention officer. I go there, they open the door, I take the cuffs off, and they say, how you did that?
And you don't know if it's actually full or not, or here's the.
No, it's, it's a sixteen bed facility. I'm sure if I call them, they go telling, well, we're full right now. We would make other arrangements, you know, Scott County is a small rural town, a small department. We'd make arrangements to hold them until they got a ticket or a bed, and then we would take them.
Well, I, I noticed another thing in the language, you know, it says that, you know.
Thank you.
The cost over one point six million is, you know, state funding, any insurance obtained from, you know, their health insurance or if Medicaid. I was just wondering, what, what is the proportion of, I mean, are most of them just Medicaid, you know, that's where we get our, you know, insurance? Or how many of them have body, you know, health insurance?
Most of them are talking about our people that are working that have enough issues, so, you know, it's constantly been a negative type of situation.
You said that aren't working, or not, or most of them are not working. We did. Okay, that you agree with?
Yes.
Do you think that's how many a year?
It's hard to tell right now, I think it's numbers for you. I know, I'm starting to ask, everybody was in jail. It was a bad situation where you don't want to take somebody to jail, but leaving that situation makes it get a lot worse. It's probably not the best place they're supposed to be, but it sounded up to that.
Thank you. You know, they have county guys up there managing this port?
No.
No lock down, some are locking down, no, or yes? I mean, I, I know they're free to go.
The doors are all locked, but if they say, I'm ready to have.
Right, with, with a request and somebody talking to them, because I know when we went, or I went, I don't really look with them, you know, they're separated and they lock.
Well, they've got, you know, all of those.
I say they, it's men.
Roger, forget it.
Where is this?
It's all in one, right, yeah.
Where is this facility? That's what I'm asking.
Right behind the, I think, building.
On Rogers?
Seventy, seventy halls, back in the.
Seventeen street.
Yes.
You take the park there?
Yeah. You have to go through Western Arkansas Park, and you want to get to Western Arkansas, that's a county, or I guess there's another, I think that's the only.
The road connects Roger and Creed.
Yeah, yeah.
Delta Park.
The airbrush.
In there, check with me.
I spent a couple of, well, I read, I know why they even look at it.
Well, it was a ribbon cut the governor, and, and, and I know this doesn't necessarily make it just fine and dandy with everybody, but the governor was at the ribbon cutting or that fish, and he is. He's all over it, if you will. He's very much promoting it. Of course, he's not.
I think it's still real. It'd make you feel better to see it first, though, it'd probably happen at some point, too.
I think we're probably all in agreement that it's a human thing to do, this is the right thing to do. It's cheaper theoretically than taking someone to jail. We all want it to be successful, it probably needs to be bigger than it is, and it's the right thing to do. But we've got this legal contract laying in front of us that's horribly, I don't want to say it's horribly written, but it, as Mr. Ambby points out, our job is to make sure we don't agree to those things, that's, that's our job. I mean, we're not being asked to make a human compassion decision, we're being asked to make a legal decision, and that's, that's where we're stuck. I'm all for it, I think it's a wonderful idea, I think we ought to do it. But we're signing an agreement. Maybe it won't, but maybe it will, if somebody comes back in three years and it's this big deal, then we sign it.
I agree with you, it's the right thing to do, I just have a hard time writing a blank check.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you see, we'll give us a blank check and trust us. I trust Judge Hudson, I mean, I, I think he's doing his dead level best to put this together, and I think he's being a hundred percent honest about it and everything with it.
I, I think, I'm going to throw this in real quick, you were, I think you were absent last month or a week, I think you came in late, you waited after Park Month, the judge left, very convenient.
Get worked out.
But I, I used your, as Parks Director for almost nine years, or whatever it was, Mr. Fowles used that very, very thing that he just said, and I, I totally agree with it. And I, it's not the same, I get it, but it is kind of the same when you allow me as Parks Director, do Nathan down to apply for a grant that's a fifty-fifty match, you basically write a blank check to allow him to go after that, and up to and out, up to and out.
Yeah, but we kind of know what we're on.
I, I agree, I hear, here's my, I think, I agree, and here's, I'm, I'm sorry, that is your, that's your decision to make, obviously, but the, Mr. Daniels touched on something, and I think, I think, I think you are asking, being asked to make a more decision on, based on human life and human things. Unfortunately, what is supporting it is a contract that is lacking in some things that would be normal in any other contract. I think the judge admitted to being, that being that way, and I'm not saying just because he's a judge, you should just sign off on it and go on your merry way. But I guess I am, and my, my two cents is that you do do that for a year, and I know it's not for your contract, but I just think, I think with the governors pushing this and supporting this, I don't think any city is being asked to do anything that no other city is being asked to do. You're going out on a limb, there's absolutely no doubt about it, without those requirements and those restrictions that these gentlemen or Mr. Niles pointed out. I mean, we'd love to be a ninety day, we're out, if it's not working, let's get out. So I think you are being asked to.
Well, I would say this, personally, I would be willing to pass this for its second reading. And if Judge Hudson would come stand in front of that microphone and be on the minutes of our meeting that says a year from now, you can walk away from this contract if this hasn't worked in the way we wanted it to. Because, you know, as Mr. Ambby points out, we've all sat here long enough that these ordinances and agreements come back, they cycle their way through the process, and they land back up here, and everybody says, why did they do that? Who, who agreed to that? And I don't want this one, this one to cycle back through in two years and everybody say, why did they do that? But if you would stand there and be on record of our minutes of our meeting and say, you can opt out of this contract in a year.
He'll come back, but I'd probably be okay with that.
Now legally, I don't know, Mr. Ambby, if that holds any power whatsoever, but.
I was talking to Robb, he's got one.
I mean, at least he could go to court and say, here's the minutes of the meeting, Judge Hudson said it.
Well, I will yield to our city attorney, you know, would you okay us to enter into this agreement as a written?
Would you give us a big mouth, before I just tell you what it's hard to go with that?
How hard would it be to get out of the contract after either, if, if they were assigned, or to agree to it?
I can tell you, first of all, so I can't tell you, it all falls apart in six years, and there's no grant money, and, you know, I, I don't know who's going to do what. Everybody's like, it's all bad, or there may not be issues, but, you know, we have five or two cities that are still hanging in there, and they still all the other entities, but their, their shares were stuck.
Does this have to be a one hundred percent, each city has to agree on it before it passes at all?
No, if you want to participate, then you agree to those terms.
You can't take.
Here's my, my, I'm sitting back here listening to all this, my point is, if the judge is on the up and up, and I'm not saying he's not, he shouldn't have any problem changing the language in that contract. Give us the opportunity, give us the opportunity to see where it's at in a year's time, and if it's gone south, we'll be able to get out. And if it's only up and up, he shouldn't have one problem, say okay. We can do that. Because if it is working in that year's time, then we can stick in it. But, but why, why is he actually wanting to change any of the language? That's just my concern.
I think it's because, I don't want to speak for him, but I think it's because he's already got some of the other entities like Scott County, and that's already agreed to this. So now he changes the game, basically, it's free, so that's what he does.
I can't, we dissect it a little better.
I'm sympathetic to his situation, that, but I agree with Lance, I mean, at the end of the day, we're charged with agreeing.
If, if worst case scenario, Hamby, Mr. Mike, Manny, or Tom, things aren't going well, I don't know what wouldn't go well, I mean, a lot of things cannot go well, but the, the cost of the maintenance is the issue, the unknown cost of the maintenance, I think, is the biggest issue, and the fact that you have no way out. But if, if in five years, or two years, or whatever it is, are we so, and I'm, I'm pretty simple minded, it sounds like that unless they just obviously change double, triple the overnight, the seventy-two hour fee, or the overnight fee, to a tremendous amount, the maintaining of that facility is what could, quote unquote, buy us, is that right?
The, 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 the facility and also the grant goes away.
Then you got it all. So obviously, you're not spending thirty, whatever it is.
And it's probably, it's probably going to be fine, it's probably going to work great.
But something that makes me a little uncomfortable about that is what we're talking about, sixteen beds doesn't even seem that it would begin to be big enough. So if they say, that didn't even start, we've got to triple the size of this building, the maintenance triple along with it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's what worries me, in his letter, he said that the, the jail capacity right now is three hundred fifty-six at this information count. But he said the current population's four seventy. That's a hundred and fourteen people over right there, and there you, you make the assumption that, you know, out of that hundred and fourteen, you know, a hundred and fourteen of them, or a hundred percent of them are mental health or.
So if they go remodel and they need a building that holds a hundred, do we have any say-so in the cost of what that's going to be, how, how we're willing to come back to?
That, but I, I don't think that's an assumption, I mean, I don't. You're talking about the overcrowdedness of, of, do all those belong in a facility like this? I think the answer to that is no, because what I understand, the facilities of the jails, and there may, obviously, there's some there that don't belong there because they didn't have this facility, but they're sleeping in the floor. Be it sympathetic or not sympathetic, I guess somebody in jail, but, I mean, there's definitely certainly a chief can vouch for those guys, those people are there because they're persecuted, it's, I, I don't, I don't, I guess, I don't think so, but I, I would hate to think, or I can't imagine that those hundred and sixteen over the limit belong in a facility, I mean, that's just my.
No, no way.
They're there because they need to be incarcerated.
We're going to rock.
We are, and I, I would say this, and I'll, I promise I've been done two, three times ago, but I'd say, if you're ever going to go out on a limb on anything, to me, this is definitely.
They need the financials.
Aren't you going for it?
I ain't going for it, actually.
They need the financials.
Yes, sir, I think that's what.
On the ad, on, on the admin of justice revenue, expenditure, which covers this program, would cover the program. The jail fees right now are running at seventy percent of what we budgeted for nine months. That should be roughly, if we were even targeted, that would be at seventy-five percent. So we're actually running below what we actually thought jail fees were going to run. And the revenues primarily, you fund the admin of justice with the largest sources county sales tax, and you've got a one percent on that. So your one percent right now, seventy-six point six percent collected already in county sales tax, adds up, your best county sales taxes up. So you're funding more in there as well. And you have a twenty-eight thousand dollar fund balance restricted ordinance to cover jail fees. So this is budgeted neutral for the most part, based on revenues. So, you've got some cushion during the year.
Is, is, I would have to talk right to the Hudson gave us, has it got that twenty-seven dollar block deal for good, or does it, it's going to go up so everybody agrees?
I think that's a solid number, that's a guess also.
I think that was a, I think that was based on the hypothetical scenario, right?
Well, the judge gets a little bit.
Yeah, but it's based on a hypothetical.
Yeah.
So we don't know, might be fifty dollars to the.
Or fifty-five dollars, that's what he said in his hypothetical.
Right.
Yes.
And I see the biggest break is, is just like, you know, Mr. Robb said, and like she says, the, I mean, one of the big strikes for the city is that they can just take them up there and they're, you know, they're done, you know, they don't have to, you know, keep them, you know, a local facility until, you know, something else happens or whatever. You know, you can just hand them off and, and you're done. I think that's a, a big benefit right there, but still, it's, I mean, it's a blank check.
Well, they also have a, they have an incentive to keep the cost down, because if they don't, what ends up happening is, it really ticks off the cities, and they don't want to participate in this program. So they realize that this funnels back to the cities as a burden, if they don't keep their costs.
But that's the middle problem, that once you get in, you can't get out, so what's the matter if they're raising or not? Nobody, it'll tick off the cities, we can't get out till the state funding drives them, according to my track. That's, that's what, that's the only deal we're going to get is an out. I, I, you're right, they're, they're, they're going to make us happy, so once they get to any of that, that's how I came forward. There's another side of the coin, is that sometimes you have to live by faith, to layer the point. And I don't think that the county, Sebastian County, Scott County, and all of these cities that are opting in are going to sit here and go bankrupt, go ahead. We might lose a couple thousand dollars, but I don't think all of the people that are signed up to this are going to sit here and bankrupt the city in some huge lawsuit.
Well, and like.
So you're going to have to take a leap of faith and say, all right, we're going to do it, but we don't like it, and we want this contract cleaned up as you figure out how to run this facility. Because there's too many, I mean, if they decide to go expand the size of the facility, and say, here's your cut of that, you know, here's our, yeah, we don't want to be, you know, we don't want to be a party for that.
But like Tim said in the beginning, you know, you asked about the young man that died in jail, but what if he could have been taken there, you know, just say it's another guy, and, and it saved his life?
Right.
So, what's that word?
Like Lance said, I mean, we have.
If it was somebody from Greenwood, we may all know them, I mean, and that would be, you know, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, too, it could be somebody's baby that you know, somebody's son, somebody's daughter, somebody's mother, somebody's brother, you know, I mean, what, what's a life?
But I, I think to, and point, you know, well taken there, Danny, but I, I think like what Lance said, we, we never have, or we have more leverage, or we never have even more leverage than we do right now, I think, with the judge, if you approach, you can say, we want some type of exit clause that's worth a fine, you know, we'll, we'll do it for a year. You know, because, I mean, once we sign, you know, our leverage is pretty much gone.
Mayor, I'd like to see the judge come back next month, and, and with that, that gives us another month to discuss it, so I'd like to, to motion, put this on for the second reading of the House.
Say it, have a motion to say it. Thank you.
Mr.?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
To the endless. The Nordman's adopting an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Sebastian County, from the Sebastian County Home and Health Catchment Area within operation, Sebastian County Medical Complex, Special Foundation Unit, Sergeant Sebastian, Robert Franklin, Logan, Scott, and both counties, and it's a community of that six county region. Where are you referring to?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, counsel, I'll get, uh, we'll get, uh, contact the judge tomorrow, try to get his schedule forward next month, some time together. But I know if you want to do that, I'll see what you want. We'll get there next month, is that correct? Thank you for wanting to hear. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Uh, number two, it's the fire department, uh, repeal and replace fireworks ordinance, number eleven dash thirteen, it's the third, really, and the chief was not able to be here tonight. I was with him, he weighed too much, he don't think he's bad, so. He got, he got a little.
No offense to the placid.
I'm sorry, no, no offense to the placid, 'cause I am just fine, and I weigh, weigh too much too, so I think he's got a little bug. And I'm trying to get my hands on it. Most of you get down from the third, following.
Second.
Mostly second to that.
Oh, sorry, third green, third green.
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Bam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Life staring?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number one dash thirteen, operating cell shooting of fireworks in the city of Greenwood, establishing penalties for violation of said ordinance and whatever.
Uh, erosion control regulations discussion.
Wait a minute. It's passed, right? Why are we having discussion about it?
Y'all wanted it on for discussion?
Wanted it back.
You got a, there's a misspelling under permits on section B, number two.
On where?
I think that's supposed to be existing nursery or agricultural operations that exit, exiting, er, shoot.
Where are you?
Yeah.
On the ordinance.
That's the old ones, that, that, where it's tied to verbs, that is.
Oh, right.
There was much discussion, I think, on this, but.
I, I guess, the only, the only thing I could think, I'd like to see a bond.
Yes.
Because a bond's gonna solve a lot of things. Uh, if somebody's wanting, I don't know what acreage should be, but we should require a bond.
We're talking about spirit land again here? So I, I want to backtrack, this, we're, we're talking about behind Harry Davis, didn't smoke out this thing all firing, right?
Correct.
So we're gonna go in there and start moving dirt, so nobody from that operation even tempted to come to City Hall and ask for anything? We just went in there and started digging on the side of the hill, calling dirt out?
I guess that's correct.
That just seems odd to me. And this guy hasn't paid one single fine, and he's a idiot, a veteran. Since a month, half a month.
I'm not sure how he would've known, or anybody would've known, that you can't go on your own property and remove dirt.
Well, for some reason, people know they can't build a house in their backyard that has the same roof and bricks and outside look as their house.
Not everybody.
But somehow everybody gets caught doing it, gets fined, and they're stopped, but there's still a house by a black man's, he was not even finished yet.
He did get caught.
Right.
And he, and since then, he purchased his permanent.
Had to get the site plan, the silvings.
Mr. Bell, would you like to comment on that?
Oh, I'm.
Mr. Mr. Berger Property behind Davis Davis. Question is, does he, does he have a site plan to you?
Yes.
I know the answer, but he can write the guy.
Yeah, we've got a site plan, he's paid the per head, it's posted. Silvings up, all that, water run officer.
Site plan, is it required to have an engineer? Look at it for erosion and retention? If, if we're required, if we're required a bond when the project becomes sizable, not only that, it's five acres. They're gonna have to go to a bonding company, bonding company, they're not, they're not gonna accept pencil drawing like we are. They're, they're gonna say, I don't wanna, I don't wanna real drawing, just stand by an engineer. We could go in and put a lot of language in, and if the administration didn't wanna enforce it, they wouldn't enforce it. That's just the bottom line. We don't know who that may be, now, ten years from now, one year from now. If we're required a bond, we put it on an outside source, a private company, to assess it and say, this is what you may or may not screw up, and this is what it's gonna cost you. I don't know, somebody could definitely under, undervalue it or underassess it, but that would definitely be reflected in the plan. The plan they submitted with bond, we could look at it and say, you've exceeded what your parameters were in this plan, you've gotta go back out and get another bond to deal with that other acreage that you're stripping like. As far as doing something to somebody's property, yeah, we overregulate people all the time, what they do with the property.
Now, it's.
I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying, I'm not sure, I would know that I have to, just to hold there, and I, I mean, and he does now, I'm not making excuses, that's not, that's not my point. I'm all for it, I think a bond's a good idea. I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
Ultimately, we're just trying to keep them having these halves stripped out, building with equipment laying around, lots hanging out, houses falling off the side of hills. That's what all this is about, just about keeping the hell up.
It's just like that there, I mean, it's, the dirt got all out of there, there hasn't been nothing left, and you're gonna stuff like that for.
And, and it's just like Ford Brown stuff, I mean, they go out, sort a project, and they may say, no, they're in trouble with, not us, but the state Arkansas, with ADQ or something, and ADQ's got locked down, and it just stays there forever.
Well, that's what we're doing.
If, if we went in and required a bond, then we can, we can.
We can get all that place, yeah.
We can go after the bond, and they go in, pay somebody, we'll finish it. So where do we add it in this?
I like the bond.
I agree.
We make a, under section one, we make an add. I don't know, I don't know, I think, I think we need to let the city attorney wag in on where it needs to be added, and if it's a good idea.
We have a ordinance, oh seven, oh seven, in this place, and I think we need to clean up to where we have it, just one more thing. And, uh, rather than have, you know, have a trail to follow, and, and, uh, I think we would include the bonding as part of the grading and erosion control regulations. And so I would place it in those regulations. And I can, uh, put some bonding language requirements in there as well as to adjust the, uh, penalties, I think that was the other.
That's fair.
Everybody's wanted to address, and I'll, I'll have some before we go on, and we can track them up.
So how do we determine what the project that requires a bond? I mean, if Lance goes out and tries to straighten a ditch to get some water to run off of his front yard, does he need a grading and erosion plan to come down and add a bond into the city? I'd say no.
I'd stick with what you got, no person's helping, got clear grading that would require uncovered one acre or more without first, it's not built with permit.
That, that would be above just the standard development of a standard residential law.
Bonding should be required on one acre, I mean, you mentioned five acres a little while ago, I think that's more reasonable. But that's, that's maybe.
I'd agree, I'd agree with Sonny, five is the point where you have to go in and.
Then you're looking at subdivision, yeah.
Well, I, I guess, the, the, the area that's in question, you know, how big an area is that? Is it a five acres, a bit less, or?
We don't know.
No. 'Cause I mean, they did, it looks, I mean, less than five acres.
Well, the, the parts of the area that five acres, that he's here, the area that he is, uh, removing the dirt is not five acres.
I'd say, I'd say at least on that, I don't know, it would be, it would be.
No, five acres is considered a subdivision.
Well, we have regulations for that, on subdivision side, this is just for erosion.
Yeah, but during, during a process, subdivision, or court of apple, and I keep using this as for, for sale, as well. Uh, you know, that being on the side of the hill, even the time that they started a project, uh, this, uh, ordinance came in to affect that if you're gonna move dirt and you're gonna take the top off of it, and you have to have silv fences, you have to do all this, you know, there's no bonding requirement.
That's why he's building a subdivision, I'm correct? During the process of building a subdivision, it already had flat, rural, all that?
Yes.
Well, there's no subdivision going on here for our time.
No, no, I was talking about forest here.
Right.
But this is, he, you know, this is a commercial project, that he's clearing land out, and he, you know, to be able to put, uh, commercial buildings uh, in that, in that park, I mean, it, it's not a subdivision, it's commercial. It would be like if somebody was of the hotel.
Right.
If, if we required, so anything, oh, if, if you, I, I believe it's an acre, and you start removing dirt, ADQ considers that's a mine. You have to have a permit. So I think, anything over that, if we required that we see the permit from ADQ, we know several things have happened. They have submitted a plan that was engineered, and on top of that, we require a bond, I think we're covered. But right now, somebody goes and starts something, and they don't bother with ADQ, and ADQ even bother them unless they know that it's happening. Sometimes they just drive by. And then sometimes they just wait, and the neighbor calls and says, hey, this guy's over there mining the creek bottom for washed gravel, and they jump on it. And, uh, they, they do the water quality, but this guy would be mining dirt because he saw it, it's going somewhere else. And ADQ requires a permit, and then that permit, they require a whole bunch of other things that we don't, we, we could, if we passed ordinance that thick, we probably wouldn't require what they require. So if we just saw the ADQ permit before we issued our permit, that would require things. And I think our permit is just almost a pass through, where it's just like, hey, we know what's going on, we know you're there, and we know you've applied for the correct stuff. And because it's more than whatever it is, three acres, we wanna see a bond, so when, ADQ doesn't require a bond, so when it all goes south, it's just like some of Ford Brown stuff, it just sits there. What we want is a bond where when it all goes south, we're gonna execute that bond, and we're gonna go in there and call Michael Johnson, Johnson Construction, they come down and fix this mess, we got money to do it. And he comes down there with a bunch of machinery, fixes it, and goes on. But without those protections, we're just laying up a bunch of eyesores.
Well, I asked a question last month, and I don't remember the answer to it, but about time, can we, can we put some stipulation about time?
Certainly.
I mean, Aron says he's gonna do this work out here.
We have a time.
Three years later.
We have a time that if you come in and you get approved for a subdivision or a project, and nothing happens within a year, then you have to come back in and reapply.
Like he started on this project we're talking about.
And, and we could put something in there that's, you know, say, a year. Okay, at the end of the year, he can come back in and say, hey, I'm, I'm running into trouble because of the weather, this, that, the other, and we extend it out another six months, another, another year, whatever. Uh, you know, we could have provision like that.
You know, and maybe you don't, it, it, you know, it's, you don't have to have all buildings built and the development completely, you've gotta have this dirt work final.
Well, that would be stage.
You got the erosion under control.
Say that, call it stage one, you have to finish stage one within a year, or you have to reapply, you know, and, uh, be approved to extend. You know, we, we've had subdivisions come through and basically were approved, but nothing was ever done in a year. They did come back and ask to, uh, uh, extend, so it's like it never happened.
So.
Right now, we don't have anything in effect, say, I, y'all wanted to go up, uh, off the road, and he didn't wanna apply for a subdivision, you know, and he just got up in the bulldozer and just started scraping the side of the hill off, and burning trees and all that. I mean, that's where a bond could come into effect when he decides he goes broke, it doesn't work out. He just moves on.
Again, I, I don't know how that would affect somebody clearing land, uh, you know, that's.
And clearing land is not mining.
But, but I mean, uh, going up for example, like you were talking about.
You do get in some erosion control.
And moving, and taking trees down, and, and clearing the land on something like that, I don't know that that has a consent of mine.
Yeah, as long as he's controlling his runoff.
Yeah.
Well, which we kinda have two issues, like we have the situation on Mount Harmony, you know, where they, you know, excavated, you know, uh, a lot of the, you know, and, and under the, uh, proposal of, you know, everyone do some type of development there, you know?
So he just would, you know, he cleared the land.
Yeah, he cleared the land, but, you know, no benefits.
We got it, we put it on the plan there.
Right, how does, on this bond deal, I mean, how do they set the amount? Are these bonding people, I don't know what to set that.
Well, they're gonna say that what their exposure is, just like when you take your sixteen-year-old down to insure your Corvette, you know.
Based on though, this site plan or this whatever?
They set it based upon the site plan, and they, then they look back at how many, kinda like your sixteen-year-old, so you've already had the DWI and four speeding tickets, and now you're gonna insure a Corvette? So it's like Branson Harris going up to Jay Cox to get a bond. It's gonna be expensive. And, and they may not refuse you, keep you out, but it's gonna cost a lot of money. So, uh, you know, they look at you as an individual, and then they look at what exposure they have on the project.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if, if a person just left town and left us with that hillside, that's a, that's a big deal to fix.
Well, suddenly, then suddenly it would wait for one year to arise, and then ex, execute that bond. And then you pick up the phone, bring it to us, and then mayor's gonna pick up the phone, call Johnson Construction, they're gonna come down here with a bunch of stuff and.
Probably put it up in the pit first.
You're gonna hand them a three or four hundred thousand dollar comp, you know, a jack, whatever it is.
God, and, and once the project is complete to our satisfaction, or whatever the agreement will go from then, then, then we answer the bond, and, you know, we just, we not out, and anything like that, but.
So I would proceed.
I agree that it should all be put under one ordinance, you know, and, uh, and that, you know, bonding requirements should be attached, and that it should adhere to ADQ.
I'd like to see the, the amount of free five acres, you know, I, I think, you know, a number of lands, somebody trying to do something like that.
I agree.
Free above.
And everything else is gonna restrict them.
Well, is ADQ, is ADQ one, or?
I'm not sure.
I don't wanna impact some farmer out in the field. Or whatever.
But that farm is not mining.
That would be the clearing land to, you know, for, like cattle or whatever, just that is.
You could dig a lake or.
There's a difference between clearing land to build a building as opposed to clearing land and setting up a track over the digging, what, what.
Yes, that's, that's.
I mean, it's, it's whitey obvious what, what it is, I mean, there's no way to sure.
I just, I just don't want, you know, that to, to lap over, so.
But in the city limits, three acres, three or five acres is gonna cover pretty much every, you know.
I would say so.
And the beauty of that bond is if it ever has to be, goes out here and is pulled, that person that had that bond is, I mean, they're, they're.
They're uninsurable with that.
Yeah.
So what is the bonding language in this ordinance?
I might just go. Actually make my notes.
I'm gonna use the three acres of bonding language and ADQ requirements.
Yeah.
Do you want title?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I do have a title, it's in there as well.
And then.
Right.
And we did take out, or I think this original talked about it, was the mine that good had stayed in the city limits, we got rid of that?
Yeah, we took care of that.
Okay.
And we're just gonna redo it all into one ordinance?
Right.
Feel and replace?
Yes.
Next one, Bell.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a title?
Um, none of my hands.
Well, I think I'm just gonna.
Can I, can I add something?
Absolutely.
I just, you know, you guys know this, you got it all worked out, clearing land you're talking about, it happened on the local project, they, they put the spot where the tank is gonna go. 'Cause they're pretty sure the tank was gonna be approved, and when it wasn't approved, they just left it. The plans for erosion control included silv fences and hay bales, none of that's up there, it's been, it's a big empty mud field, Evan, how would you help? All the trees are gone, and so they're ready for construction, but there is no silv fence, there's no ditch for drains, there's, there's not even hay. So again, while you endorse this stuff going on, it's not big enough for bond, the way you're talking about it, but they're not doing. you're talking about it, but they're not doing what you guys have thought about with your, your basic expectations from here. Just add some.
Good point.
Well, we've got a spot up on Mount Harmony, where Ken Gish is going to do something out there, and he tried to dig a pond, and wiped out a whole lot of trees, and it's still just sitting there with trees and a pond with no water, and those are reserved for a long time, and I think you might have got it, but it's, I'm not sure what's going on up there still.
They're planning nicely.
It's been well over a year.
There's, I mean, it's the same thing, it's the same thing that's happening on Main Street. I mean, I didn't see them, I already made that comment earlier.
Yeah, I saw it.
I mean, a lot of, there's a lot of dirt work going on there, and there's no, nothing above the tree, I don't know, but you got it for us.
I'm sure our planning, our helping, our, Sonny Bell, you know, what's going on with John?
I mean, this site, we got it for us.
Building's fair. Site plan, who does that?
None of them.
Well, he don't drive around town, he doesn't.
He don't drive around town, hold that.
Have you stopped by over on Denver yet and seen what's going on?
That's utility, he's over there.
That guy, all that digging for utility?
Utility, utility even is what I saw there.
No, he's, he's talking about cross law phase.
Talking about cross law phase.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was smaller color.
I'm sorry.
But that's also what we're talking about, with the nerve you blew, I'm sure all the...
I think I'm okay over there.
No comment.
No comment. I didn't bring it up. But it is.
Yeah.
It is one of them.
Well, you should have those. I mean, obviously you got to go to the force.
I'm alive here, but it ain't mine. That's right.
I'm sure there's silt fences up stuff over there. That's not the same way. Can the city council, can councilmen go around getting sides out of Eastman's and hooking in some of it? Are we allowed to do that?
No.
I can get you some.
Look, you get silt fences. You can look at it. My thing is on my truck.
I mean, it's the same, it just needs to be, we have a run of supplies, and just got to get it forced, and one person get it forced, and law, and law.
Well, if this is a city force, isn't, aren't we the laws of the city? What do cops do? You see a lot of crowds, ready for it? Well, ready, do me a favor, have you guys go out there tomorrow and see what the hell's going on?
We'll check that out.
Hey, we'll call.
Calling right.
I blew on the speakerphone.
Tell me, tell me. Okay, dopey, I think we've got to a, what are we going to say here? Man's going to work on Mr. Ham, he's going to work on it. Okay. New business, number four is Twenty-Nineteen Village, not Village, as I referred to this morning. I was correcting pretty quick. Village ordinance versus best, this is our goal every year.
Every October.
I'll make a motion with...
Whatever he may want.
If you're randomly picking everybody, so what? You're about to forget somebody.
You, you should've got that.
I counted all my fingers.
We have a motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? An ordinance assessing it at five point zero mil tax unrealized on property within the full requirement, and the city has to ignore itself for the year twenty nineteen, area of emergency for other purposes.
How, how do you do this?
It's written.
There's no, this is read?
Yeah.
I'm going to pause in the way, because that's our second. You have a motion second.
Okay, so you made the motion.
Uh, Mr. Brown, in motion, second, but I'm going to keep that.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we put this on third reading. Right, title on the board.
Didn't you just make it?
Second. All right, I'm sorry, I like them in there. Make the motion with, I'd like to make a motion to the...
Second, you have a motion second to the...
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion to enact the emergency clause, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion second to enact emergency clause.
Is it all second? Is it brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Davis?
Thank you. Um, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What time was it, where you were?
Uh, three hours, three and a half hours. Good. Uh, we're with Super Treasure Annual Police Tax Bond Report. We're happy.
Same old thing every year, it's supposed to do this every year according to the bond, it's list tax law. Did I talk about a new thing, or? Okay, well, section nine of the post issuance compliance policy manual requires annual reporting to the state council concerning compliance with bond covenants. Linda Mann, Simmons First Trust Company, trustee of the bond certified through the city by letter on April fifth, twenty eighteen, met the annual report of city for twenty seventeen was filed like a fifth, twenty eighteen, with the municipal security rulemaking board pursuant to the continued disclosure agreement between the city and trustee. This certifies that the requirement is technical tool on a half by Simmons. The original balance of bond, heading to seven, was three point two million dollars, and the current outstanding, as of today, two point five ten, two million dollar. Bond's mature date is twenty thirty-nine, and I contacted Simmons, and they confirmed that all principal interests have been paid from March and September, and all matters concerning the bond or compliance. Any questions? Ask Tom.
So, we're, we're on track with the bonds? So will it be paid off, it'll be paid off before twenty thirty-nine, right?
Should be, because your escrow, and all of this goes through the escrow, and it pays, city sells a new stack, so we're increasing that at about three, three and a half percent cliff every year. One thing that's not in the report is just what we have in the escrow.
What do we have?
I don't know yet, I've, I've, it's not in, swallowed today and not filled in very well, so that was one of the things I wanted to do, and I didn't know what her report was going to be like, but I wanted to go back and, I can get that for you, it's exactly what we have on the reserves. I don't have, right, I have the bond report that is filed, that we file every year.
I was just curious, I know we're not, we're not going to be paying on this till twenty thirty-nine, I was just wondering how...
Kind of a gap there.
Yeah, what kind of gap are we narrowing in on? Because they, they figure a very conservative, figure that's how we get out to twenty thirty-nine, right? Very conservative approach.
And it's a variable interest over that period of time, too, because from one point six, I think, to seven, uh, it's a little, in the later years, you would want to accelerate the payment, get out of the interest. But I'll look at that.
I'm just, I'm just curious of what our target actually is with our growth.
Yeah, I, I didn't have time today.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-nine. We only have accepted or any, you know.
Okay, moving on to, we have taken care of number six on the water distribution, so we're going to number seven, street department resolution to amend budget for sidewalk repairs. Mr. Dennis, in case they have questions, or sure they will.
No.
Never. You have, you have that ordinance in front of you, resolution, I'm sorry. Are we talking about a certain area, Cam?
Yes, number eleven, the name, over at, over at, over at, over there.
What does sidewalk checking mean? The quotation, sidewalk checking?
That's the account.
Oh, the checking, I forgot.
The name of that one.
Go to the bank and give you a check. You can write checks.
The account twelve three hundred is called, sidewalk.
So will it be, you're going to tear out all this, all of them?
They have to put it back in.
We are not going to do that.
I know it was like, every one time they, you know, I guess on the north side of the square, you know, they, they did a, you know, they died the chopping net, you know, red, you know, is there anything like that, extend that there, or is that?
There is, we just moved it forward, you know, just a, you know, just, that was gone, and we're just going to stay where we are.
Well, this, this project for, like, for, for, ADA, that deal.
Okay, but I mean, we are going to be tearing out that, all that really, I mean, but... Not all of them, we're not doing the whole, all the way down, just...
No, no, no.
We're not doing all the way down to like centrally, and do the, just, just resting.
Just making that ADA.
Exactly, there's front of the, I don't have those.
Which allows access to everything else, because the rest of it's okay.
And I guess, you know, just right there, I mean, I'm kind of envisioning that, you know, I mean, uh, it's, it's going to just start right there where the sidewalk is and kind of ramp up for, you know, is it going to be the right seam line, or am I...
Yeah, that's the point, yeah, that's all going to be, that's the whole point, is making, making, ADA, ADA, accessible ADA compliant, guardrails. You know, the question came up, and I'll just say it before anybody asks, is this, are we just doing this because of the business in front of us? Well, we, yes, we are, but it is a sidewalk, and it's a business that is there, but we do it on the other side, if there's another business that needs that accessibility, absolutely, so.
It's parer ready, I don't know, Angela.
I'm sorry, parer ready, playing the business. Well, that's job security for you, so.
We need to, we need to...
Yeah. And nobody asked, and we're going to make sure that we are.
The reason this budget, uh, resolution is being required is because we budgeted revenues, but we cannot budget any projects for the sidewalk for this year. Now that he's got a proposal for, he would get eighty-nine-five, or he would get ninety thousand dollars to cover the cost of that ADA, then he has some additional projects to patch and repair some of the sidewalks, which he's expecting to be another thousand dollars. So we're going to hit the ninety-five thousand dollars that we have, or ninety-six thousand, I think that's in the fund, sidewalk fund, we're going to hit that with about ten thousand in expense, we do budget a thirty-five hundred dollar generated revenue, so, and that's ten less thirty-five, so six to five.
Well, I guess one thing, you know, kind of along that line, you know, it seemed like in, in years past, I would, I don't know if it's this year, but it seemed like on that side, you know, a lot of grass grows up, whatever, it seemed like it grows for a while before, you know, we do anything about it, I was just wondering, is there anything that's, you know, to deal with that more timely before, you know, the grass, you know, it seemed like it's, you know, six inches tall or whatever, and...
You talking about any of the sidewalks and law?
Right, right there on the, yeah, sidewalks.
Sure, yeah.
Try to support yourself.
Like, believe me, he get, he hasn't been bothered as much as the other department has had, or did prior to his being a part of that, because if I'm driving and I see it, I call him and ask somebody to come and spray it, or, really, I prefer they bring flat shovel and heat it up and then spray where it was, because you just spray it, and that's going to be three days of dead grass, and, but, you know, that's a maintenance issue that we can be on top of a little better. And I know one, on Dr. Rattle's area, it's the same thing over there, I feel, old sidewalks and especially across the street on the, I don't know what, the, the...
Peculiar fleet.
Peculiar fleet, yes, same, same thing. And, and while we're on this subject, I know we don't have in front of you, I don't, I'm going to, we were, I was asked a year ago about the sidewalk, and, and I was saying, I discussed this, and is it a sidewalk, you know, property line says it's their property, I'm in the mindset, and I'm talking about my particular building, too, down there, I was asked kind of to help build their ramp back for them, or their loading dock, I don't think we need to be doing that, but we probably should address or look back at that again, and I'll talk about it.
It's a rock building?
Yes, sir. You know, because I, you know, I'm going to do something.
Property owners.
Right, that's right. It's, it's perceived as a sidewalk, but it's on their land, on the back side, between Dr. Evan Brown and, again, what's it called, peculiar fleet.
It's on the north side.
Build the, let's know. On the loading dock end, if you will, then toward our property.
Towards the old firehouse?
Yes, sir. That's all busted out. Is, is their property, the owner's, been owned it, uh, who built the sidewalk for his, my...
Who built it?
Oh, I...
It's just, there's no way it's been...
Probably trucks backing into around. Used, absolutely, that building, been, it's lit through the tornadoes, so.
Property has, when we tore down City Hall.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. So neither of here or there, it's there, it's here, sorry. So, any courses?
So, that's, that's not involved...
No, 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 you're just talking, I'm just chasing, right.
I might go to some, we got...
Second. You have a motion second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Thank you, sir, council. And by the way, we'll be coming back to, hopefully very soon, Mr. Bell and Dennis and I, or they will be, obviously up here, hope they consider, is about the thought of putting a sidewalk sections on Thamesburg, we're not, we're not really pursuing that anymore, we got to rack up on that course, if you will, but I still think this, we're going to, we're going to.
I think there would be a problem with that.
I know, I know, I agree, we're going to, we're going to...
I wish somebody gets around.
I'm going to catch a property.
I think you will.
I guess.
Wow, I'm going to. I'm going to that Denver street, keep it while you're at it.
Any money to be spent, I mean, I'm telling you, in that, in that sidewalk sign is, that's what it's for, and we ought to be putting some sidewalks in, so I don't know what else it costs in Thamesburg, I'm ready to plead it, to build.
I think we're all in agreement.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Aaron said it'll be seeded and hay by the end of the week.
Seeded and hay by the end of the week.
Nice.
There you go. Thank you. That's what you call it.
He said he didn't have, he didn't have any silt fences though.
Oh, that's just a, they sell them to Jagger. They sell them to Jagger. Get together with Jagger, they're probably about... I don't know if that has anything to do with it. That's right, Harold, that's right. Uh, what are you up here for?
I'm like on the last...
Waiting, number eight, that's right, yes, sir.
That's a lovely event, uh, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to reappoint Robert McKenney for another term, thank you. I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert McKenney.
A motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Another thing I might want to say, we talked about Mr. Gish a little while ago, he turned in his letter of resignation, and I expected that he would be leaving the first of January. Uh, you know, you guys authorized an additional planning commissioner, I think I've got that spot filled, and so now I've got the point, now, the first of the year, I'll be bringing you a name for approval for the planning mission next month, so. I think I have a room full of people that are interested.
I think you'll be pleased with one.
We're pretty.
We're pretty, he snuck out here, didn't he?
I would like to find somebody on, on the west side of town, near your area, or in, uh, you know, West End or somewhere like that, that's not being represented, and that's what I'm looking for, so. It will be a little particular, uh, like, it was the one that I feel like y'all will
It'll be a little particular, uh, like I said, the one that I feel like y'all will be excited about is on the west side of Main Street, but I'd like to represent all that, Westwood, you know, something like that, so, you know, somebody that's interested in that area. And, uh, having a little ways in my neighborhood, she might be able to talk to. I've got one lady that, uh, I think I'm knowing, that was really excited about, and she feels like a good name, something like that, use that.
How many big wheels are on those planes?
None.
That's why I'd like to have. Be excited about it.
It'd be nice to have a lady.
That's broad.
What is it?
You both have to learn that.
Okay, did you say to them, and I'm sure you did, I was being, Charlotte's bothering me, did you say that, uh, you put an ad in the paper or announcement?
I put it on our website, and I put it on that, the Hebringwood, Facebook.
You know, in the past, we, that's been kinda, that's been kinda too close, people picking, I think, so it's nice to let the whole people know.
Did you get any feedback from her?
Uh, just the one today, but, uh, again, I'd say now, I've got the point now, the first few years have really looked something, and once that I've, I, I've got some parameters that I don't want to be, uh, within the vehicle, so, yeah, I just...
And knowing.
Hold up there, hang on, I've got an ad.
And knowing when these are, how often they are, what day it is.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That is everything on the agendas or the business items. We are now, Department reports some questions from council, we've got a few still remaining, those that are more loyal to the city of Greenwood are here. Mr. Bell? Chief, yeah, and Nathan back there somewhere, you have any questions from these gentlemen?
Well, uh, Mr. Patterson, that's me, Tom, you know, is the...
Then Mr. Tom.
Discrepancy, well, not discrepancy, but, uh, abnormality or whatever, or morality in this month versus a year ago, you know, and it might seem we're down in both, you know, county and city, you know.
Oh, you're talking about sales tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go, thank you, sir.
By the way, it was known, it was made known to me before the meeting, that Mr. Marsh got ill enough not to speak, that Mr. Neighbors was gonna take the place, is that correct?
Take it over. Yeah, we were down, um, in the city, in the city sales tax, we're down, uh, one point one percent, and, uh, but right now, we're still, as a year, we're four point five percent off. So, if we were at five point three, that was a, that was, to me, that was the anomaly. Usually our run rate's about three percent or over three percent per year. If you look up at the top, you'll see it was two point nine, two point six, four point two in the previous years. We're right at four point five percent run rate over year-over-year right now. That's the city, so I don't know, remember, what we collected September was August, so.
Well, I guess I, sometimes it seems like, you know, when the county down a little bit, the city's up, you know, there's that kind of counter, you know, but I've noticed where they're both kind of, you know, uh, well, I guess, uh, year over year is about even with, uh, on the county side.
County was a point three percent up for the month, and point six percent for the year, that's where we are, we are right now. But if you look back, it was point eight percent last year, county's been trailing down over the last couple of years. And two thousand sixteen, it was three point two percent increase. So we budget flat, so we're gonna budget whatever this year ends up being, so we're gonna budget that half percent increase in hand.
Thomas, we've been budgeting flat for a while, which I love, but is there a time where you need to probably budget more, to get to the point where you're rich money, how's that work? You understand what I'm saying?
I think the safest thing to do, cause we tend to be a little more conservative with our, with our revenues, um, I think this works, but, you know, there's, we could say, hey, we've got these new businesses coming in, we've got growth going on, both in the residential side and commercial side. I think it'd be a safe bet to say that we're going to, with these new tax bases or tax sources, see increasing a little bit more aggressively. Um, I'll look at that when I see what the trends are gonna be over the next, um, few months, but you only have three months left in this year, and, you know, I, I'd love to see, you'll notice that the red line, if you look at your graph for city sales tax, it seems to decline in the last three months. And so I think we've hit our peak, and I think we're gonna be trailing right along that same path. So I think a four point, a four percent increase, which is flat from last year, we're at, but by flat, I'm saying we're gonna budget what our revenue is this year, next year. So we are really budgeting a four point, four point five percent increase over the previous year, but it's gonna not be an increase next year over what we just did this year.
Okay. We already know there's two and a half million dollars to spend in this area.
I would admit that's a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Not out of the city's coffers.
No, sales tax, sales tax.
Yeah, I'm helping this.
Yeah, yeah, we have not spent that money. That's true. Yeah, and we love all restaurants.
We do have budgets that were submitted or distributed to all the department heads or directors, and we, somebody's already turned it in.
No, please stand up and take a bow.
Bow. Somebody has turned his back.
He had a two-page budget.
That's why I'm driving around the fourth of August. Did you hear what he said, when you have two-page budgets?
It's got the easiest budget, but, uh, everybody is relatively working on that, hopefully this month, we'll have a first round, go at it, and, um, I'm looking at possibly doing some meetings in November.
Awesome.
That's right. Very good, anything else from the others, folks? Counselor.
I just wanted to say, I like what Charlotte's doing, and I hope that first year, when we organize our meetings, we just put that language in the...
You like the random call?
I do.
Do we get? Oh, well.
I'll be on the toes.
Yeah, so I noticed Mr. Hamby looking like...
I just don't hide the picture randomly. Have thrown in the trash, or you lose your weight.
Oh, she's got a little Bill of Fortune there.
A lottery thingy over there.
I like it, but I like the little...
Let me ask you something, did somebody dream up, or was this something somebody said?
This is what Ben talked about, for all...
Well, there's a lot of times that some votes around the space go forty-two, a lot of times thinking, ah, those two are even their cherry boys on the... Let me think, so, that ain't no jam, I vote for them, trust me.
Well, this'll work, that.
Yeah, exactly right.
Just let, oh, we wanted you to be able to say that.
We just wanted you to acknowledge, yeah. That's for fan vote, I hope we're trying to split the vote. Well, it's gonna have to, you might get some little vote, I don't know.
It's just put the phone in, counsel.
We don't need more. The phones count.
The phones go, alright.
I, I wanna thank the street department for putting the, uh, little bump out there in the, on that property, where the ditch is dug, that's got nice little asphalt action going, yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the bus driver would do too.
Well, I was trying to, we're trying to save that, keep that for now.
Yeah, it's getting worse, yes, sir, thank you.
We're planning on trying to do that, replace all that, thank you.
Can I get some buzz, we put on here?
They've been talking about it.
Apparently y'all got too much talent, I need to start forcing them on.
No, what Mr. Derrick and I had discussion, we feel like...
Still worried about the cough, open up.
Next meeting, you guys will say, that's everything.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
We say something, that's probably, that ain't moving out of this chair. But really, they're moving.
Moving, be right.
She's got to be buried for years, ladies, I could be on it.
No, it's good.
I ain't sure, I need more ideas. I ain't moving, I'm tearing out, I'm just going. All the record.
I'll move, I didn't do, I personally can't believe what you did, anyway.
I'll be leaving the bathroom with those coffee.
That's true, alrighty, uh, counsel, we got anything further you wanna discuss, I got an announcement or two.
Hey, I'm gonna make a announcement about the volleyball game tomorrow night, is that what you're talking about? Is that what you're announcing? The volleyball game next up, lots of pink out, and all proceeds are going to, uh, Fort Smith Reynolds Cancer House, the October second, high schools at five thirty, and then the third of October, junior highs, playing guard restarts at three thirty, then eighth and ninth grade after that, but, yeah, the volleyball pink out, and feel free to go up there and watch the girls.
They're all pink.
Yeah, be that.
What time, Sam?
Uh, the high school starts, the JV games at four thirty, and then the varsity's at five thirty on Tuesday, at Greenwood, the volleyball arena, and then the seventh grade's on the tenth of October, starting at three thirty, volleyball pink out night, come to kill them in a minute, that's it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, ball festival, or National Night Out, it's actually tomorrow, it begins at four, or is that seven? Four to...
Four to seven.
Four to seven, at Bill Park, so, lots of fun stuff up there, and normal bounce around, and I think there, you got vendors, is there some vendors or no?
Yes.
Good vendors, yeah, I know personally, I know him very well, Batman, please.
Chief, uh, Chief Dawson's void, six pitches, one hundred forty-five, you're not too touched by that?
That all came along, didn't it? Player of the night, or week, right? And kudos to Voice of the Bulldogs for leaving here at approximately, I probably shouldn't say this, you got down there pretty quick.
Yeah.
Came straight from work, went down there.
Then went straight back to work.
Went right back to work, so, good for you.
That's tough.
It's always good to hear from you. Uh, National Night Out tomorrow, uh, Fall's Festival at Bill Park, Mr. Neighbors, you got anything special, talk about there?
Ninety-five.
Yes, the two clowns on the square, Eric, Sunny and I, that's it. And one of them quit waiting, by the way, I noticed this, thank you.
Head of Union Gathers.
Okay, Union Gathers, sorry. Uh, this coming Saturday, yeah?
Yes.
Uh, this Saturday, uh, nine o'clock till four?
Five.
Five, lots of, eighty-ish, maybe, I don't know, a whole bunch of eighty vendors, hair rights, and I don't think they're scheduling music necessarily, unless you want any material to be back.
Uh, there's gonna be a yoga demonstration for people to come look at, is, uh, hospital?
That's yoga, that's yoga.
Just yoga.
Do what?
Just yoga.
I thought you said disco.
No, yoga.
So, cool, are you, Mr. Robus, are you doing hair riding, are you awake?
Straight to park, straight to park.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was thinking about that yoga.
Oh. Fall Festival's always fun, and, and the weather, hopefully, is a little crispy, cuz that's always nice to have. I just wanna say that I think we got a lot accomplished tonight, I think there was some good, good discussions, and it's helped, healthy, I think, for everybody, not necessarily agree with everybody, I, I will continue, we get to continue, we, the compliment that I hear about, uh, the city of all, and mainly the council, we are not in the paper for silly stuff, shenanigans, and it's nice to hear those, that from, uh, citizens, so. And thank you to Charlotte for her job, and she's unpoised, bless her heart, she has nothing to worry about, good for her.
That's true.
I wanna thank Deputy Robson coming up.
Yeah, thanks, sir, I appreciate that, yes, sir, just bad to hear from the commission, folks that are interested in the council, see, concerned citizens, thank you.
I have a club there.
Yes, sir.
Run walk the road, or cop version, you run walk the road, you're twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, there you go, and by the way, the video, voting that is probably the best video I've ever seen.
If you have not seen it, it was...
Fifteen years, and I'm, my family's twelve of those.
You've not seen the video?
I will get them.
Oh, good, gracious.
Oh, it's all that, it's pretty amazing, thank you, Tom, for sitting through, being sick as you are, you look bad.
I'm like, most winter, I was...
I'm sorry, uh, thank you, that's what you're, yes, that's what you're very good at. Is that our November date, the council meeting date is not our normal, because of the election, meeting on the sixth, so we're meeting on the twelfth of November.
That's following Monday.
Following Monday.
Following Monday.
Monday.
Make that change, you're the council.
Okay, early voting begins on October the twenty-second, here at City Hall, uh, I'm just saying that, because of this.
The twelfth is our council date, that's better, it's a day.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, sure, but it's, you're, okay.
That's what it's concerned, it's about...
It's still all to close, I think.
Uh, we are, no, uh...
But we should check it right now, it's like, we do that.
Sorry, are we closed?
That's better today, we're closing. Yeah.
So thirteen, the number six.
Yeah.
Tuesday, gentlemen.
Yeah, we Tuesday.
Tuesday is better, so. Fourteenth.
November the thirteenth, is that a, once?
We have...
Is that a second Tuesday, Tom? Because it's on the second Tuesday, Mr. Hamby, a lot bigger, do we need to further? That's, that's...
Well, we don't have elections, that's for sure. Or, or he gets sick? That's what we're in it, for the election.
All the equipment stuff.
Do we have it on a Thursday?
Where's it at, you got, I'll figure it out.
Well, there's one, I mean, we have, uh, there's firemen on the second side.
So we live on thirteen?
That's what we're talking about, that's what we're...
Or you can come in on holiday.
That's your track.
Yeah.
That's not a good idea, because I got lots of them that day.
The, the Thursday following the sixth, because I thought that, or I, I guess...
Will I have all the machine tires?
Thursday?
Thursday, November eight?
The eight, I'm sorry.
Gentlemen, Thursday, November the eighth.
That sounds like something cool. Yeah, just tell me who is, we're, we're here.
It's election, all election, change.
I'm here instead of, I'm everybody out here, no, he would have...
Thursday, November the eighth, at seven P M, be here, we'll be square.
I will.
Oh, November eight, oh, November, we look back, that went four.
Oh, again, November eight.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't know.
I can't move the sits.
They might have something to say. Election.
And since the sits, they centralized the worship place, we got, we chose one.
Aren't you glad? Mr. Derrick loved it, does it here? Good? Yes, sir, thank you, I would entertain a motion to...
Don't take it, I'm...
Thank you.